Good evening, one and all. Call the meeting order. Tracy, take role.
Harrington?
Here.
Hoffman? Pollack?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Okay, the agenda is for you. There are no changes, so motion to approve would be in order.
So moved?
Back in.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda? Any item on there you would like to discuss ahead of time? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Back in.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Kevin? Turn on your mic.
Sorry. Okay, I have two things to report on tonight. Southwest Growth Utilities. They are making some progress. They completed a lot of the process piping near the wet well by the pump station. They did install the precast lid on the wet well, and they're working on installing the guides for the pumps. They had to stop installation of the dual force mains between Kansas and Jones Boulevard. That's mainly because of the melting snow and all the muddy conditions. Their equipment couldn't get in there. So it's going to dry out, so they'll be able to start up on that again. They've also been slowed on their final boring under I-380. And that's mainly due to a wet sand seam that they encountered. They are working on a solution, and they hope to resume that again today. I did not hear back later today whether they were able to do that or not, but hopefully they were. And the masons have been working on the building itself. I know the blocked walls are installed up to about the door height. So they are making some progress. On this project, the final completion date is May 31st, and substantial is on April 1st. And we don't think they're going to make substantial. They have applied for an extension directly to Fox Engineering. They've applied for eight weeks, mainly due to claims of delays because of the derecho and COVID. Fox has requested a lot more information and haven't received that from them yet to evaluate that. So we don't know yet whether that will be granted or not. The second project is the Rancho House renovations. They have resumed. We've resumed our construction progress meetings. We had one last week with contractor. They are back on site this week. They're installing windows. And next week, they're planning to frame and build the south deck and the ramp. And they may do the permeable paper installation. I know that contractor is checking out site this week. And then if it looks good, and it should, then they should be in next week to install that. And then the following week, they're planning on finishing the siding and then start the exterior painting in April. And the final completion on that is May 30th. And I think that's all I have. We continue to work on City Hall, continue to have meetings with staff. We had a pretty good meeting yesterday, Monday, where we presented the site concept. I think that was pretty well received by city staff. So we are making some pretty good progress. Right now, we're working on floor plan options. So that's all I have tonight unless you guys have questions for me.
Questions for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Hare?
Good evening, y'all. Just a couple of things from me. First, talked a little bit at the last meeting about the utility assistance program. It's actually a rent and utility assistance program that'll be coming down from the state. We sent out some information to our customers about that. And so far, we have 41 accounts that have pre-applied, I'll call it, or have expressed to us that they believe they're eligible. So in those cases, we've deferred payments and late fees, and we'll be waiting for for them to apply and hopefully receive those monies. I wanted to note that the Affordable Housing Coalition is working to help applicants complete the applications, and our library staff will also be helping folks who need help with that. So we're really trying to to make folks aware of it and get as many people plugged into that program that qualify. We also are using language ambassadors to help with translation issues if there's a need for that. I would also note that we have 102 other payment arrangements or agreements in place. So in addition to the 41 accounts, we have 102 accounts that are in some sort of payment agreement. These are folks that wouldn't apply or wouldn't be eligible for the utility assistance program. Those aren't all new. We've been working with these folks since, some of these folks anyway, since COVID has started. And just a reminder for our audience, if anyone would like additional information on the newest rent and utility assistance program, go to iowafinance.com, and you should find what you're, the information on that program. I've had a couple of you ask about neighborhood ambassadors update. So I talked to Nick today a little bit about that, and he said they are continuing to onboard ambassadors and continuing still to search for some in a few neighborhoods. Right now, they have ambassadors actually sending out surveys in their neighborhood. So it's a it's a single survey, identical for every neighborhood. And then each ambassador is trying to reach out to those within the neighborhood. And they're wanting to, this is a survey where they're hoping they can do again later on and see if any improvement has been gained, for example. Just asking about engagement, if people feel they're engaged, or if they're, you know, what things are being done now, or what could be done better. And so then we'll come back later, ask those same questions to kind of measure improvement. So that's kind of what they're working on now, and we'll continue to expand that program. And hopefully, as folks are vaccinated, or folks can get out more in the public, this will be, we'll have more opportunities there. And then lastly, I just wanted to remind folks that, starting last Friday, we are having Friday Facebook events on public projects. So in lieu of our project open house this year, we're doing four Facebook events, all on Fridays at noon. And then, of course, they're recorded as well, so people can come back and watch them. Highlighting various projects that are upcoming for the city. So last week, for example, talked about parks projects, the tennis courts that'll be resurfaced, and a little bit about Centennial Park and what is eventually planned for there. This Friday, we're talking about Rancho Way. Actually, that'll be the only topic this Friday. And then we'll continue through March with other topics. It's, we had 20 people last week, so fairly good attendance. And hopefully, we'll continue to see not only good attendance, but people watching the recorded sessions as well. That's what I have this evening unless you folks have questions.
Any question? Okay, Mayor's Report. Have a proclamation to read this evening. March for Meals on Wheels. Whereas President Nixon signed into a law a measure that established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and over. And whereas for nearly 50 years, these critical programs, commonly referred to as Meals on Wheels, have delivered more than nutritious meals to homebound seniors in virtually every community across the country. And whereas dedicated staff and volunteers who deliver these meals each week provide a vital lifeline and connection to the community, which are sometimes all it takes to keep our senior neighbors at home where they want to be. And whereas the Meals on Wheels program celebrates the collaboration of local community organizations, businesses, all levels of government, and compassionate individuals to ensure that our seniors are not forgotten. And whereas North Liberty residents are encouraged to volunteer, donate, or speak out to ensure that seniors in our community can live more healthy, happy, and independent lives at home. Now therefore, on behalf of the City of North Liberty, I turn it on you to hereby proclaim March 22nd through 26th, 2021, as March for Meals on Wheels Week. Did we have a representative online that wanted to make comment in regards to this? Okay. Next item, Fiscal 21-22 Budget. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding the budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2022, July 1st, 2021, through June 30, 2022, for certain levies. Is there anyone that has submitted a local comment on the budget, Tracy?
I have received, I have not received any.
Thank you. Anyone online or by telephone that wishes to make comment? If not, we'll call the public hearing to a close. This will be Resolution Number 2021-16. Resolution adopting the annual budget and capital improvements plan for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, for the City of North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions by council?
Mayor, I just have a comment. I know I wanted to bring up the I wanted to bring up the added FTE that's going into the community center. I voiced initial concern over that FTE being added. Certainly not going to persuade a vote against the budget from my side by any means. But I did have a discussion with staff this afternoon about those concerns. And they are working on a job description for that position. And I've been assured that that'll be brought to council. So that position will be budgeted for. We'll have further discussion on that once the job description is complete and have more consensus from council is what I would be looking for before we would ever hire into that position. So thank you, Ryan, for that conversation. Thank you, Mayor. I feel comfortable with that and look forward to reading that new job description and having that discussion down the road. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns by council, please?
I would just like to also recognize the staff. This is pretty hard to put all that together. These things are getting more and more complicated as the years go by. And even since I've started, you know, on the council, this has really become more and more of a a process. It's getting more and more refined as we get better and we get cool computer programs for Tracy. But it still takes a lot of time, and the staff will really work very hard to come up with a reasonable request so that we can kind of keep moving forward on all our city projects, but still kind of keep our tax rate as low as we can.
Other comments? If not, Tracy, take role.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
The vote is for affirmative, none opposed. We have met the requirements for state passing the budget. Resolution is deemed passed. Tree and Stormwater Board, I would like to ask council to approve the appointment of Doris Vaskey, 1480 Morrison Street, North Liberty, Iowa, 52317, to that unexpired term. Would accept a motion to accept that appointment?
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Just appreciate it here. Sorry, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Just going to say thanks to Doris for applying for her interest. So looking forward to seeing what she brings.
Good. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Conditional use, colony property, reviews and comment regarding proposed conditional use on the colony property. Mr. Ruske, Rusnick, is this yours?
Yes, sir, it is. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen real quick.
If you would, please.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Good. Okay, so here's the colony property outlined in red, but just also that highlights that the property is actually in an unincorporated Johnson County. Mr. Hardwick is asking for a renewal of a conditional use permit for a landscape business. And I've kind of highlighted where the where the activity occurs. Pretty well buffered from other residential properties. I drive down Front Street quite a bit, and you can sometimes see a a landscape business vehicle or a trailer. It's pretty pretty low impact, in my opinion. I haven't seen a lot of impact, so we do have an agreement with Johnson County that allows us to review these conditional use permits. This was previously approved by city council or a similar request, previous request on January 8, 2019. And the city council made a recommendation for approval. And there's three conditions, that the conditional use permit applied to only this owner, meaning that it can't be transferred to some other property owner or business owner. No retail sales, and that the conditional use permit be valid for two years. I don't expect Mr. Hardwick to object to any of these, but he is here. And so council actions tonight, you can take no action. You can comment recommending approval. Or you can comment recommending not approval. And if you recommend not approval, it requires three force majority by Johnson County Zoning Board of Adjustment. Staff sees no issue with this request and recommends that the council recommend approval with the same three conditions.
Any questions for Ryan? Scott, you got anything you'd like to say?
The only thing I'd like to say is that in the last two years, we've had basic new business, growing pains, difficulty with employment with COVID coming in. There've been a lot of people that I'd hired that decided to stop working because they were concerned about getting COVID because even riding in a truck with masks, they didn't feel comfortable. But I do have a number of new guys on board, and these guys are really pumped up, ready to go, ready to get started working. And I see our expansion putting us in a position, by the end of this year, the calendar year of 2021, I anticipate we'll probably be able to start moving into a new facility somewhere else that is zone commercial. But again, I'd like to go ahead and stick with the two-year permit, but that's kind of the goal where we are right now as far as position-wise financially.
Any questions for Scott?
What kind of things do you do?
We do landscaping, lawn mowing, trimming, hedge trimming, tree work with the derecho. We've done a lot of tree removal and hauling and basic lawn care is basically what we do.
And I read from the application that if they are doing you know, work at somebody's house, and there's like a retaining wall or something, that typically gets shipped to the property and not stockpiled on site.
Exactly.
Any other questions? As I said, the options are before council is to recommend approval, not recommend approval, or take no action at all. What would be your choice?
I would recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Since this is not a formal resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There you go, sir. Corridor Commercial Development Company Site Plan. Mr. Rusnick again.
Okay, I share my screen again. Okay, so this is a request for site plan approval for a 9,200 square foot medical spa and salon on just about one acre of property. Here's property locations at the southeast corner of Jordan Street and Sarah Court. Existing zoning property is zoned C2A, which is our highway commercial district. Certainly, this use is listed as a permitted use. Comprehensive plan for this area is commercial, so we have no conflicts with the comprehensive plan of the zoning regulations. To date, we have not received any public comment, negative or positive. When we look at site plans, we review it in accordance with Municipal Code 165042. Those are our site plan requirements. And then our design standards, which make things look very nice in this community, are 169.12 and 13. So staff did review in accordance with those and agrees that the request meets those requirements. And so here's how the site plan lays out. I call this a very thoughtful accommodation of multiple forms of transportation. You actually have public side, buildings actually pushed up to the street, which planners love, by the way. You have public sidewalks that have a dedicated walkway to the entrance, which faces Jordan Street. And public sidewalks wrap all the way around to the building. And on Sarah Court, they have a bike rack, which we didn't ask for. So we thank Dean Wheatley for always pushing for those. And we have 50 parking stalls, which actually surround the building to the south and east. So parking doesn't become the dominant feature of the site. We do have residential properties to the east. We have some two-family homes over here. So actually, this is a pretty ideal use when you talk about kind of a medical office or a spa being right next to a residential use because it's a lower-impact use with with low-impact hours. Typically, when we look at sites like this, we look at what kind of screening they would have against residential properties. And actually, they planted many of these trees a couple of years ago, and hopefully my you can actually see that they filled in quite nicely. They're generally spaced between 20. This one was a little further apart. It was about 40 feet, but has grown up pretty nice. They would place additional landscaping to fill in those gaps. Here's kind of a look at the landscape plan, landscaping around the building as well as berms and landscaping to screen the parking lot. The site line is very low-impact, again, very, very compatible with adjacent residential properties. And here's a building design, all masonry with the exception of kind of a wood composite material on the east and west elevations. And actually, the west elevation, which is here, and the north elevation, which faces the street, is a nice amount of glazing. So a lot of good visual interest, also has pergolas in awning. So I really think this is going to be an outstanding addition to the City of North Liberty. So city staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its March meeting as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Rusnick? Applicants' presentation, if they would like to present.
Hi, this is Kelly Beckler with MMS Consultants. Once again, Ryan did a fine job of presenting the site plan in the building. I don't know what else I can add at this point. Be glad to answer any questions you might have, and I'll also note that Jake Evans is on here. He'd be happy to answer building questions. I could take care of your site questions. So if you have any questions, we're here to help. And thank you.
Henry?
Thanks, Mayor. One thing, so just echo Russ's comments there. Of course, wanted to give a shout out to the bike rack, so thank you for that as well. Maybe it's you, Kelly, or Jack, can you talk, or Evans, can you talk about more what services within this medical spa there will be? Do you have knowledge of that that you can share with us?
Jake Evans here. My knowledge on the services is somewhat limited to what they want. I do know it's University of Iowa Health Ventures, and the other user with them is Thompson and Co. That's going to be, they're doing kind of a joint venture together to play, I think they basically use each other in a capacity that mutually is beneficial for them. I don't know a whole lot about the ins and outs, so I would pretty much defer to them to speak to exactly how everything works inside of it. But construction-wise, we've gone through a lot of a lot of reiterations and changes with this project to make sure it meets the needs of them and their and their customers and patients. So really excited to bring this forward to you guys. And I'm excited to get moving on this project for them and get them opened up in a timely manner.
Questions or comments by any other members of the group here, gentlemen?
I just had one quick question about the lights in the parking lot. So they'll be facing in and kind of corrected into their parking lot and out of the people's backyard.
Yeah, we did receive a photo metrics plan. We didn't want to bore you with the detail of that, but that was reviewed. Meets all of our codes. And I looked up the lighting. It's actually a very low-impact LED lighting, so it's not going to be very bright or intrusive. And I really think it's going to be very compatible. Just an excellent choice of what that would be, because I really think that that's going to be very compatible with adjacent residential properties to the east. So it's not going to be lit up and bright at all. It'll be very low-impact, just enough light that you'd be able to see if you were, we were walking through it in the dark.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have Resolution Number 2021-17. A resolution approving the development site plan for 1750 Jordan Street Medical Spa and Salon. Too bad it's not a saloon, but I'll take Salon, North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any last question? Tracy, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Thank you all for your investment in North Liberty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last time we have is the pool heater replacement. And discussion of replacement of the pool heater. And Mr. Hare, I think you probably want to take off on that one right away.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess the details obviously were in your packet, but just to kind of refresh here. We knew going into FY22 that our heater at the pool is going to need some work. And we, in talking with Johnson Controls, who does a lot of our HVAC mechanical work, we got an estimate on just replacing the heater. Upon further inspection by Shive Hattery, and I think I saw Ted, yeah, Ted online here. Ted is our mechanical engineer who can really give you the nuts and bolts about it. But we found some other issues within that boiler room. Some code issues, some piping issues. The second boiler unit is also showing its age and is going to need attention replaced. And so And so our seventy thousand dollar budget number, unfortunately, doesn't come close to touching what this project is going to cost. And that's about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And what that includes is the replacement of both boilers, but also the relocation of these units to a different, to a new add-on building or small, small, small building addition to the east of of the community center. We have discussed funding options internally and bounced some ideas off the mayor and what you have in front of you in your packet is a proposal to use some cash reserves that we have available and then also borrow a chunk, I think about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the remainder of that. And the thought process there is we didn't want to spend down all of the reserves in case something else were to pop up. And with borrowing costs pretty low right now, it makes some sense to take advantage of that. So with that, I think if there are specific questions about the whys of this project, I would defer to Ted. What we're, what we're looking for tonight, though, is approval of the proposal, so we can move forward with this. Right now, you know, the Band-Aid we have on the the system is working. Our concern is that once we start operating the outdoor pool, that we could be in a little bit of trouble. So I'll leave it at that and and take questions.
Now, Brett.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, are we going to be able to reclaim any space with ripping all of that out? Like, is that in the guts and the bowels of the building where it's unusable when we move it? Or are we going to gain something from this?
Well, we will have an open space there, but I would defer to Ted or Shelley, who I think I saw on the line on how that can be used.
Shelley, I can speak with the team here. So Brett, the existing location of the existing boilers would be replaced with new heat exchangers. These heat exchangers would decouple the chlorinated water stream from the heating hot water loop. So too deep into the details, I think we pretty conclusively determined that part of the reason for the existing boiler's premature failure was the direct heating of chlorinated water. You know, that that chlorinated chemistry is pretty hard in the boiler heat exchangers. And so as part of kind of a, that really, we recommended the provision of these heat exchangers that would go in place of the existing boiler location.
But Ted, wouldn't those exchangers, maybe I misunderstood, wouldn't those exchangers be substantially smaller than what's in there now?
That is correct. So the heat exchangers themselves, there'd be two of them, about two foot in diameter, about four foot in height. There would be significant piping surrounding the heat exchangers, so you might gain a little bit of storage, but really what you're gaining is maintenance access, you know, which again, kind of helps us keep the boilers having a long lifetime, which is really the intent here.
So so the addition on the building is for what, then?
The addition on the building is for the boilers themselves. So in the existing footprint, you know, where the boilers currently lie, they first and foremost aren't meeting code-required clearances. You know, those code-required clearances are essentially a minimum. The manufacturer's recommended clearances would be even larger than that. So really what you're dealing with now is a really cramped maintenance access space. So the boiler house really is to serve as kind of a separate location, so those boilers can be walked directly up to without having to hang out over the backwash pit, for example, and basically be more easily maintained.
Brett, one other comment I had was that the current boilers right now are stacked on top of each other, so that's saving some space. But when we change out, the water exchangers are going in that place, and then the additional building is for the, actually, two boil pool heaters, both one for the indoor and outdoor, but not being stacked on top of each other, like Ted said, for maintenance clearances and stuff like that.
So Shelley, with your plan, is there, is there anything in the next five to seven years that we need to be thinking about with this project for expansion or additional service or anything like that, so that we're? I mean, this is a, this is a lot of money. This is significant investment. Is there anything we are missing that we need to add on to this thing to assure that we're going to meet the the vision that you have and that Ryan has for the building moving forward?
To my knowledge, I mean, for the pool-wise, there's really not much room for addition anyway, because of the gas lines to the east. So I mean, this is basically serving the purpose of the existing facilities we have. And again, space is definitely an issue on site that I don't think we have enough clearance with those gas lines to the east, what we could actually add on.
Yeah, that's one thing that Ryan and I wanted to talk about when we met was, okay, we got this. What's the possibility of something going down within the next five years that maybe needs to be addressed concurrently? But this seems to be the primary issue that we need to deal with. And that if something does come up, it's going to be a sneaky one. And this is going to take care of a problem that we have now. Ted, one question that I had was in the past, North Liberty's water was pretty hard. Does that contribute to, you know, like the heat exchangers wearing out quicker?
You know, I think for the most part, the pool water chemistry is really what's driving the degradation of the boiler heat exchangers. I don't think the hard water helps, but I think it's mostly a function of the chlorine content of the water.
Okay, so the thing is, too, is there, I know that our water generally is softer right now, but does it maybe need to be softened some more on-site?
So, you know, you could certainly look into softening domestic water, you know, water that would serve things like showers, for example. I wouldn't recommend softening the water that serves the pool boilers, however, or the pool itself. I think just the volume of water you're dealing with, that would be an extra expense, you know, that would, that would be quite costly.
Okay, I just want to touch that with everyone, just to know that we asked that question, so.
Ted, this new system, are there, are there efficiencies built in where we're going to realize a cost savings of operating a new system with a new technology?
Yeah, so I think the operating cost will be significantly lower, you know, I'll say roughly on the order of ten percent. I can't promise that you'll get a payback on that, you know, because the initial investment is so high. But based on the old heating system, which I think is about eighty-two percent thermally efficient, where the new one will be about ninety-four, you know, so ten percent plus increase in terms of operating efficiency, really in terms of natural gas cost is where you'll see that savings.
Good question. Anything else for these two?
I disagree with Brett that, you know, when you start designing the building, part of it, just make sure that since they're building a addition, that we make it big enough for whatever else we think we can do, because it's going to be cheaper to do it now as opposed to later and so.
Good point, Brian. Yeah, this is Mayor, to your point, something we need to do because it's just, it's a hard number to swallow. So appreciate everyone's effort on it. It's just wish we somehow could have anticipated this or, I don't know. Just a large, large impact.
It has a large impact, but the thing is, that's one of the most basic thing that we have for kids in the summer as well as adults, and we can't afford to let it go. Anything else? Ted, Shelley, appreciate your comments. What you have for you is Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen. A resolution approving the services agreement between the City of North Liberty and Shive Hattery, Inc. For the Aquatic Center Pool Water Heater Replacement Project. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
Some move.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Any final discussion or question? Tracy, please.
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Pollock.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Thanks again, Shelley and Ted, for you being here this evening to answer the questions that needed to be answered. Next item, Ranshaw Way Phase Five. Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen. A resolution approving the purchase of permanent and temporary easements from various property owners adjacent to Ranshaw Way for the Ranshaw Way Phase Five Project. Mr. Grant, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a resolution for the acquisitions of the last four parcels that are needed for the Ranshaw Way Phase Five Project. And after we've conferred with our appraisers and done some other research, we're pretty satisfied that the negotiated amounts that are in the resolution are reasonable and appropriate. We have, I want to put, make one note here. We've reached an agreement with the party's attorney. All four of these properties are represented by the same attorney. And so we have, we have an agreement on email, but we haven't received the executed documents now. And I would normally hold off on putting this in front of you until we have signed documents in hand. But the first compensation commission hearing is set for two weeks from today, and so what we're going to do, what I'm proposing we do is to approve this on our end and in anticipation of us receiving the signed documents, I'm told yet this week. And once we do that, we'll execute them and be done. That's it.
Questions for Grant? Okay. Again, Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen. Resolution approving the purchase of permanent and temporary easements from various property owners adjacent to Ranshaw Way for the Ranshaw Way Phase Five Project. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
Some move.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions?
Just Grant, how do we what trigger, if they send it to us, does the mayor sign this or is, how do we?
Yep, the mayor will sign it. And and if they don't, we don't receive the signed copy in hand, then, you know, I've I've got a date on the the twenty-third, but I, I can't imagine we're not going to have this in hand. It should not be an issue at all. But in order, in order to not jeopardize the project going forward, we'll have the hearings if we, if we, if for some reason everything falls through, the hearing's still on the schedule. As soon as I get the the documents that are signed, I presume the mayor's going to sign them and we'll cancel the hearings.
Okay.
Okay. Good question, Brian. Tracy, take a roll, please.
Pollock.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Next item, Dubuque Street Project. Resolution Number twenty dash, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-one dash twenty. A resolution authorizing the establishment of compensation estimates for the Dubuque Street Phase One Improvement Project. Grant, is this one yours again, please?
It is. Thank you, Mayor. This one and the next one. And if you don't mind, I'll speak to them both in turn here, that since they're, they're related. You'll, you might recall, Council, that last winter, we had the same type of resolution for the nine-sixty-five Phase Five Project. When there are acquisitions that are not complicated or serious, we don't need to pay the extra money to have an appraisal for those things. And so state law allows us to, once you approve the process, allow us to use compensation estimates that are informed by informed by some appraisals and other, and other things to spare us the expense of having to appraise every single little parcel that's, that's involved here. For this, I have proposed that we use the compensation estimate procedure for those properties on the Dubuque Street Project, which only have temporary construction easements and/or permanent drain easements. The calculations for those are pretty simple and straightforward. And we have good other comparable properties that are being appraised in the next resolution to inform those estimates, that we can use to inform those estimates. So that's the first one is the allowing me to establish those estimates. I'll put those in another resolution once I have them and probably for our next meeting. And then the second, the resolution has to do with approving the appraisals that we have received. So I'll leave it with the first one for now.
Questions for Grant? Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Pollock.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Next item is Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one. A resolution establishing fair market value and just compensation for the acquisition of certain properties for the Dubuque Street Phase One Improvement Project. Grant, does he need to speak anymore to that one?
Happy, I can speak all night if you want.
I'll give you ten minutes.
I won't, won't need that much at all. This, these are the appraisals that we had done for the remainder of the Dubuque Street Phase One projects. And this, approving this will allow us to move forward with negotiations after we send the appraisals out to the property owners.
Okay, and this one is purely acquisition centered?
Yeah, we don't want to wait any longer than we have to.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to establish that resolution, please?
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or question? Tracy, take a roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Pollock.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Next item, this will be the second consideration of ordinance Number twenty-twenty-one dash zero one. An ordinance amending Chapter one sixty-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending regulations on property located on the west side of North Liberty Road approximately two hundred and twenty-five feet north of Psalm Drive and also being east of Arlington Ridge Subdivision located in North Liberty, Iowa, to those set forth in the municipal code for the RS six single-unit residence district. Now, Ryan, you sent something out to everybody as far as the lots and all, did you not? Any explanation on the map or details on it?
Yeah, I sent some information out at the last meeting. There, there was request about the difference between RS six lots and RS four lots. And so what, what you hopefully saw on that exhibit was that the majority of the lots in this proposed subdivision are RS four. There were, I think, thirty-three RS six lots, or lots that didn't meet the RS four requirements. So that means they, they could be bigger than RS six, but not big enough to meet the RS four. So hopefully that cleared up some, some concern or clarification from the previous meeting. And the only thing I'd add, more of a commentary, at least in my opinion, is that, you know, when you drive by these lots with a home on it, most people aren't going to be able to, to, to notice a difference. The layperson is the planner, like Russ pointed out right away, probably, but most of us wouldn't, wouldn't tell the difference.
Well, since it's the greatest majority RS four, so, you know, I think that was a key concern of most of the folks here, so thank you for doing that. Anyone wish to establish the second consideration?
Some move.
Aye.
Moved and seconded. Final discussions or questions?
Mayor, I would just say a follow-up from the Arlington Ridge homeowners that have contacted me on this. Very appreciative of the, the work, the planning that's gone into it. They really felt like they were listened to. So Lauren, thank you very much. Ryan, excellent job in the presentation and addressing those folks and those questions. You put a lot of things at ease from traffic control and speed to parking to construction, to how is this going to fit in and, and you know, have a positive impact on our property values. you know, have a positive impact on our property values. So well done to both of you. I appreciate it.
Lauren, any comments you'd like to make before we go on to the second vote?
I have none. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to make sure you had a chance. Okay, Tracy, take a roll.
Harrington?
Hi.
Pollack?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Second consideration passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Number sixteen, Dog Park rezoning. This is the second consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero two. An ordinance amending chapter one sixty-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property located on the east side of North Liberty Road, approximately thirty-five miles north of Oak Lane Northeast, located in North Liberty, Iowa, those set forth in the municipal code of the P Public Use District. Anyone wish to establish that second reading?
Hello?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions on that, please? Tracy, take a roll.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Pollack?
Hi.
Harrington?
Hi.
Second consideration passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Zoning code, this is the sign regulations amendment. Second consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero three. An ordinance amending chapter one seventy-three Code of Ordinances of North Liberty, Iowa, entitled zoning code sign regulations. By amending several sections in chapter one seventy-three related to exempt signs, specific sign regulations, and temporary signs by deleting sections one seventy-three oh nine, entitled signs in the commercial recreational vehicle district. Anyone wish to establish that second reading?
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or question? Tracy, take a roll, please.
Smith?
Hi.
Harrington?
Hi.
Pollack?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Second reading passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Dog park membership ordinance. This will be the second consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero four. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of North Liberty, Iowa, updating portions of the Animal Control Code and park regulations concerning membership for in-use of dog parks in off-leash areas. Anyone wish to establish the second consideration of that, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Smith?
Hi.
Pollack?
Hi.
Harrington?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Resolution, I'm sorry, second consideration passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Item nineteen, franchise fees. Mr. Hare, did you want to start that discussion? No? Yes?
Sorry, I had a hard time finding my darn mute button. My apologies. So we've funneled you quite a bit of information on what a franchise utility, a utility franchise fee would look like in North Liberty. And you saw revenue projections ranging from one percent electric and gas fee to five percent. And then we escalated those numbers over five years to give you an idea of what that would look like. Additionally, we tried to, or I tried to show you what, in this case, a specific home utility bill would look like and shared with you a spreadsheet if you cared to look at your own or talk to your friends and neighbors about it. So really, I think tonight, what our staff is looking for, our team is looking for is direction on whether or not this city council wants to look at implementing a franchise fee to fund certain projects and or programs. And if so, then we would need to talk specifically about the projects and or programs. And if not, we can move on. But I mean, at this point, I'm hopeful that you have information, that the information you need to have that discussion. So I think with that, I'd turn it back over to you folks and we're here for questions if there are any.
I, Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
I think I'll open it up. This is something, like you've said in your memo as well, Ryan, and in conversations, we've been looking at and discussing over the years. So one, thank you for all the information, the spreadsheets, the modeling. It was interesting to look at the different city comparisons. So just if folks on the call here are having a chance to look at that, I would recommend that. I think, team, just my thoughts on this are, we have so many requests and needs, especially from a parks standpoint within our city. Obviously, that's something people have come to know and love and appreciate and I think are proud of in our community. So I think this is a potential way to defer, diversify revenue source coming into our city that we haven't looked at prior or have formalized that would allow us to fund specific park projects. So I want to open it up to others, but I'm open to the potential of a fee for utilities here and funding that specifically then to go towards park projects in the future. So I'll pause there because I want to hear from my colleagues.
Thanks, Annie. Other thoughts?
So I will echo along with Annie that I think that this should be dedicated to parks. I think that, you know, if you look at even like a low amount of one percent, you know, an estimated income, excuse me, estimated income from a one percent fee would actually allow us to get a few things jump-started, such as at Centennial Park that we could do actually then fairly quickly because we would know that we would have that revenue coming in, but we would then have to make sure it's dedicated to that. I think that I would only do electricity because I don't think everybody in town uses natural gas. And so it would make it kind of equitable for everybody. But I would favor keeping it on the low end of the one percentage or so area.
Mayor, I like, in this, I totally agree with what has already been pointed out in terms of this. And I too think it will also help us in being able to fund some of those or get a start with funding some of those other projects as well. And I would say to keep it on the lower end. I definitely appreciate the additional information that was sent to us so that we can review and get a better understanding in comparison to some of our neighboring cities and the franchise fee and the span of the percentage with that. So I definitely appreciate that the additional information that came in with that. But we would definitely have to be specific in terms of what it's used for.
Okay. Thank you, Rakesh.
Ryan, my question, you sent the list and I know it's pretty broad of what we can use this for. I just want to ask the question. I assume that the parks projects that we all have in mind fit what we can use the money for?
Well, I don't know if each of you have a different project in mind, but I would say generally, yes. We could make that, that would work, yes.
So I think the consensus is parks. I think that's what we've talked about for a while. My piece is, you know, either user-based fees like this or, you know, a local option sales tax type of tax. I am more in favor of those way before I am of increasing property tax. And I think that, you know, we're staring at a comprehensive parks plan, especially Centennial Park where there's a lot of pieces that have yet to be done. Some of those things are very expensive. The road coming in, an estimated seven hundred thousand dollars just for the infrastructure before we can start the other nice-to-have things there, the amphitheater and the splash pad and those types of things. And then we're also looking at, you know, out here as we expand towards the high school, the need for parks out here and needing to purchase land. I certainly would like to see Centennial Park, you know, further ahead before we start buying additional property and having to put, you know, another project on the books. I think that a franchise fee helps with that, if it can be dedicated to to parks. And it's a fee that's going to immediately go back to, you know, things that a lot, and I'm not going to say everyone, but a lot of our residents use, that they enjoy, that we get back on, at least I do, feedback from folks that move here. Those are reasons why they're coming here, the trail systems, the parks, the outdoor recreation. And that's, these fees can be used for those things that can also help us expand as a city. So I would be in favor of considering it. I don't know at what level. I don't know if one percent makes sense or if two or three makes sense, but certainly on board with moving forward with that.
And if I could just jump in, just to remind folks, a one percent utility fee for both utilities, now gas and electric, that is, would generate about eight hundred and seven, or a hundred and seventy thousand a year roughly, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand over five years. So and I think it's fair to say about any percentage, it's not, you know, depending on how aggressive this group wants to be in park improvements, it's not the, you know, it's not going to fund everything. So there would still be a need either for other borrowing or other revenue options or slowing down on the project. So I just, I just, I don't want to have folks think, okay, we approved a one percent or we can get all this done. I think it's probably obvious, but I'm saying it out loud.
Well, I think the thing is, if we're using it for seed fund or fund to back up some projects to get them started, is not a bad way to do it, you know? Where we're at, if we want to get serious about our parks, money's going to have to come from someplace. And I'd like user fees far better than I do putting back into property taxes. You pay as you use the utilities. So it'll be, you know, up and down for each respective family. So the thing is, my recommendation has been, well, would like to be, that would like to at least go in at a two percent level. So we have a combined income of a possibility of up to about a million seven fifty. And that would help jumpstarts in projects better. And again, please remember, we talked about Centennial Park, but you know, there's possible needs at Penn, you know, park, other parks. And if you have that at hand and it meets the definitions, that's what the important thing is. It meets the definitions and we can move ahead with things. That's seriously, we've deferred now for three, four, three or four years now. And, you know, this is one way that we can point to move ahead and show things above ground to people like Brent was saying, to show that, yeah, this is what we're doing here. This is how we're trying to make the quality of life better and it's visible. So.
Mayor, I would also say, you know, I know there's a number of press that watch our proceedings here. And I would urge them, as they are taking this up and researching it or writing stories, that they reach out to staff and get the list of other communities that use these taxes that we can provide to them. Almost, almost every state, yeah, use it. And so please reach out and we'll be glad to provide that information on our comparables and what they are.
Also on the website, in the packet.
So I think what we would just need to ask is, I think part of this has, part of your projection has gas fees in it. Is that correct, Ryan?
That is correct. Both gas, this is gas and electric.
Yeah, so, but I'm not, you know, I think that we don't have natural gas. So I think that probably we, everybody's got electricity except for the people who are doing solar. So you guys can ponder that, too.
Well, that's coming next, solar tax. I'm glad Chris is here right now. There he is.
Oh, I'm here. I think I got here just in time.
I think you did.
My apologies, Council, for being so late. I have a very good excuse, so.
Sun tax.
No, 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 no.
Brian, I would just say though, when you talk about, and I see what you're saying, you're wanting it equitable across the platform. But just remember, with that being a user fee, you're not going to pay a fee if you're not using gas. So if you are using and you are a consumer, you have that franchise fee. If you don't, then you do not.
Chris, do you have an opinion on franchise fees and the use?
You know, I was hoping to wait this meeting out for this conversation to be finished by the time I got here on this one. So you know, I think we just had, we've had a lot of changes and a lot of revenue changes that we are in the middle of right now. And while I don't see a real significant downside or a burden for, you know, electric users, gas users here in the city, it's just one more thing that we would be adding a fee to. And, you know, I'd be fine with, you know, like a one percent increase or in addition of that franchise fee, but you know, I'd also be fine just waiting and see if we, how this next budget cycle goes as well. So I really don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on it.
Okay. Mr. Hare, what else do we need?
Well, I guess, do you want, if you, if this group is interested in moving forward with a franchise fee or utility fee, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but I get the impression that every, everyone or most are agreeable to move forward. There's some discrepancy on a one or two percent. There's some discrepancy on electricity versus electric, or electricity versus gas or both. If we're going to move forward, we need some of those, we need some of those details. I mean, we could bring you a sample revenue purpose statement, certainly to talk about how the funding would be spent based on this conversation tonight. But before we, and maybe the next step is to bring in ordinance, ordinances plural, to show you what it would look like, not have a public hearing, just discussion on a potential ordinance. And then if the group wants to move forward with an ordinance, we'd have to set up those public hearings and move forward. But right now, I would say we don't, I don't have enough from the group to bring a specific ordinance forward. There's still some questions that are out there. And if you want to defer until another meeting, we can. Or if you want to talk about it now, certainly can do that as well.
Brian, are you, I guess I would go back to the electric and gas. If we can clear that up for them, are, I mean, are you able to be persuaded on the gas issue?
So do you have any idea, Ryan, when you talk to utilities, how many gas customers we have in the town?
I would suspect, the short answer is, we haven't talked about that. I would suspect that there are very few without gas.
Okay.
I mean, any, anything, all new subdivision, all my, I don't even want to say new, anything built, you know, in the last twenty years is going to have gas. But we can, we can, we can try to better find out, better find an answer for that.
So, well, why don't we just do that? But that would not be a major holding point then, Brent, I think. So for me. for me, as long as most people have access to it and stuff. So. But, you know, my, all of my neighbors, none of us, well, going down, we don't have natural gas. So.
Grant, would it be possible to write a skeleton draft ordinance with initial provisions in it where we can, you know, hassle it, hack it all over and come to some conclusion before we go on the final form?
Sure, Mayor. In fact, I think most of our ordinances are already written and there's a, there's a placeholder in this and our ordinances for, for this. So I'm, I'm happy to, to provide that, give you a sense of what that would look like.
Okay, and 1% on both? Is that what we're saying right now?
Well, why don't we, I, I kind of, I understand what you're talking, Mayor, that, you know, make it worth doing. So why don't we say like 1 and 1/2% and that gets us somewhere wherever, at least probably $200,000. Does that sound correct?
I myself would be comfortable with, with one or two. I mean, I, it's, to me, it would be up to discussion. I think we can have that as this, as this skeleton comes out. I, I don't know if we need to set on a specific percentage, do we?
Was that question directed to me? I missed that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You, you don't need us to settle on a percentage tonight, do you?
Not, no, but I do think if we, if we're going to bring back an ordinance with a public hearing, we're going to want a percentage in it. If we're bringing back an ordinance just for discussion, so you guys can take a look at it and you want to debate that percentage more, we can do that too. I, I do think, and, and Grant, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I do think though, if we're going to have a a public hearing on an ordinance, we're pre, we're going to want the right percent, the percentage that folks are committed to in that ordinance.
That's correct.
I, I don't think we're, we're quite ready for the public hearing myself. I, I think we've, I think we've got a few things that we need to hammer out as a team yet.
So Grant, would it be possible, or can you put in there in the ordinance, no more than a certain percent? And then set the percent up to that, or it has to be all?
No, it's, it's a, this is part of what it is, is we are able to set a number, right? And it's, and it's no, and we, we set what it is and then the utility companies that have franchise agreements with us comply with whatever number it is we, we've said, and it has to get set by resolution. It's, it's kind of, it's kind of a big deal to, to, to do this even more so than a regular ordinance. So.
Grant, how, how long is it reviewable? I mean, if it, you know, if we start at 1% and two years later a council decides they want to go to two, are, are there restrictions in when it can come up for renewal?
No, except that if you take it away altogether and then bring it back, you'd need to do, have an election to do that. If there was, if that was, if you removed it altogether, but I don't think we would do that. I think we would set it at zero rather than remove it.
Yeah. And I, I would just say there is some language and it varies in each franchise on how often the city can ask the utility to change it. So if, if we set it at one and you decide in a month, I want to go to two. There, there's going to be some pushback there. Each one's a little bit different and we can look into that. But so there is, I mean, if you're talking a couple of years, no, that's not going to be an issue, but a couple of months, that, that would be an issue.
Ryan, do you, with, with all the cities that use this, are there a, is there a lot of variances or discrepancies or differences, I guess, between these franchise fees? Is this something that either through League of Cities or Grant or something can bring back, you know, hey, here are cities that do this and this. We get the basic premise, right? But are, is there something that we need to research a little bit and bring back to the group? So we don't miss out on if we're going to do this, that there's not something else that needs to be in there?
I'm not sure I'm understanding your question. I would say that how the cities use it varies quite a bit. I can say that anecdotally just from visiting with other municipal folks. You know, some put priority on streets and roads with it, others parks, others might direct it specifically to a community pool, depending on, you know, how big their community is and then it, it just really is a local issue.
I, I, I know that I'm jumping in halfway through this conversation, but I think I would be fine setting this at 1%. And if, you know, I think we can probably settle there for, you know, a year or two and a few budget cycles. I think 1% matches what Iowa City and Tiffin and Coralville have in place right now too. So not to be doing anything out of line with what our, with what our neighboring communities are doing.
Personally, I'm in favor of both utilities going up to 2%. I think to jumpstart or to help jumpstart to, to echo kind of what you said there, Mayor, just from the standpoint of, you know, 1% would yield about 170K a year. That might seem like a lot to some, but I think with the projects we have, that feels like it's not going to make much of a dent. So I think and, and what that exact cost would be from our modeling, I guess it's an impact, but not major. So I would be in favor of going up to 2%. Obviously, that's more for discussion here. Brent, to your point earlier, if we want to see what those look like for sure, discuss that again our next meeting and then put it up to public hearing. I mean, I'm open to that as well. But just from my lens, I think from the, the opportunity I've had to be on council, we've continued just to move and I've done it my, we just keep moving things further and further out. So I'd rather get this going, jumpstarted and that way more people can use it more readily available. So I'm in favor of 2% for both.
And I'll just say, I think, I, I think that's a, that's a really financially responsible kind of, you can go get them, approach to it. We could also borrow money for projects and with the promised revenue of $800,000 in the next five years, that's not a, an insignificant amount that we could use. So tying those monies up because of a revenue stream is pretty easy to do. And with interest rates being as low as they are, it wouldn't cost us that much to borrow. Again, I, I, I was either, you know, yay or nay on the entirety of it, 2%. You know, I, I feel like that would be a little bit of a, might be a little bit of a stretch, especially for something right out of the gate. Considering that I think we could borrow on the stream and, and fund projects quicker in, in, inside of these five years to, to make that happen. So again, I'm just kind of circling around that 1%.
So my intent would be to use the money to pay back bonds so that we could get going on things. So I agree with Chris on that to, to get going. And not necessarily dedicating so much of it to a project in a specific, you know, an area and we're not going to do it until we get the money for it. I would prefer to use it and then use that to pay back like, like we got a bond to pay for the pavilion at Centennial Park. You dedicate a portion of that to pay that back.
And to, back to that point, you know, it, folks from my conversations, it is, you know, they, they want, and yes, we're an instant gratification society. They, they want to see, you know, they, they don't, to your point, Mayor, they don't see the sewers. We spend millions of dollars putting things below the ground and people don't see it. They can't touch it. They don't, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to speak to that. If you look at what would be brought in with 1%, you know, we're, we're resurfacing a tennis court that's over $100,000 just to resurface a tennis court. So for us to go back to our constituents, having gone through the pain of negotiating something new and a new fee, what we would be able to show for it at 1% would, in my opinion, may not even be worth it.
And I think to jump in on your, that's a good point, to jump in on your paying for water and sewer. You know, we didn't pay for that in, in one lump sum. We spent years working up to that. And we're spending years after borrowing money to make that happen, paying it back as well to, to spread that out. So money is, money is cheap to borrow right now and saving up money or having a revenue stream dedicated to a project. While it's noble and you can absolutely say, hey, this money is this year going to a project. You know, we can just, we can leverage that five, 10 years worth of projects, not worth of projects, but that magnitude of dollars amounts for projects and not quite a few of them off to meet your, you know, your initial point of the instant gratification. I think we can do a lot with this, with just the promise of repaying money that is borrowed or to pay down money that we've already borrowed.
At the very beginning of our packet here, I just wanted to note, there are, there are some state law restrictions on, on what can be used, what the money can be used for, right? And so almost any public improvement project can be shoehorned into there. I am not clear that servicing debt for an existing project qualifies. And I would want to do some research on that before I, I said that that's something that would be a, okay, just FYI before you, I think it's a great idea, but I would want to do a little research before I put that in front of you.
Good point.
It's your understanding that we could service new debt with that if a project, for example, was building a pavilion at Centennial, we bonded for it. These revenue streams could be used to pay for that debt.
I'm reluctant to shoot from the hip on that, on, on servicing rather than, rather than just a straight expenditure.
Okay.
Let me get you the right answer rather than correcting myself next time.
Okay. So I think to Annie's point a few minutes ago, if we write an ordinance, we come to an agreement that we write this up to 2%. That, that may, that may, you know, scratch that itch about having some substantial amounts of money that we can actually just use and not put against borrowing. However, if you find out that we can, you know, we can use this revenue stream to pay down a debt, then, you know, 1% looks much more, looks as palatable as 2% just going straight to project. So I, I, I think to Annie's point about writing the ordinance up to 2% right now gives us some flexibility in there. And I'd be okay with having that kind of language in place to, to allow you guys to get going.
I don't think we can write it up to 2%. It has to be a number.
Well, in, in a, in a public hearing, yes, Ryan, but I, I think what we're saying is, is bring the framework, understanding that I, I don't think we're going to go higher than 2% as a group. So I don't know if that helps you get started in bringing the framework and having the discussion with the team prior to the, the public hearing and the actual ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'll say yes. But it, I mean, I think at this point, we can provide, I, what I can do is provide projections for, from, you know, 1% and then go quarter percents all the way up to 2%. So you can kind of get an idea of what that looks like. And for the framework, we can plug in an X where the number is. I mean, I think that, you know, that at the end of the day though, I just want, I was a little confused, which is easy to do with me, with Chris's comment about, you know, writing an ordinance up to 2%. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. When, at the end of the day, when you're voting on something, there's no flexibility there. It's 1%, it's 2%, it's 1 and 1/2%, it's not up to 2%.
For me, I think it, it, it would help my answering questions and discussion with constituents to have you or Grant share a screen that shows those projections and say, you know, with our numbers for North Liberty, the average household that uses, you know, family of three or four, whatever, just like you did with us, you have that spreadsheet already built, but knowing that we can narrow that scope to just the 2% and under is going to help, I believe, conversations that I'll have moving forward on what that looks like.
Easily do that at an upcoming meeting.
Yeah. And I was going to say, you know, folks can do this math at their house. You know, they look at what their annual electric, gas consumptions are. Take 1 or 2% of that. Ryan, would a, would, would one more meeting be okay just to, to let Grant go research whether we can service debt on this and just put this back? Just get that percentage number to you two weeks from now?
Absolutely. I, I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't want, I mean, there's, there's no rush here. And, and at the end of the day, this is going to, this is going to take time regardless, because we have an ordinance and then we have to get notice to the utilities. So yeah, we can take as, as many meetings as you'd like. So not a concern there.
I think we keep the momentum going. I think this is probably the best discussion we've had around this. Appreciate all the data. Ryan, you and the team have done to prepare us for this is really what, obviously, I want to speak for, we want to go in with the most informed information possible here. So that way we can make the best decision for our community. So I think if we keep this momentum going and if Grant, if two weeks, you know, between now and our next meeting, you'd be able to research that and do what you need to do to share that information with us. If we can, and you bring the modeling then, Ryan, that way we can keep the momentum going. And then maybe as a group, we can decide this is the direction we want to go, give that firm number. And then the following meeting, we could have that public hearing. If we can just kind of keep it, keep it rolling. I advocate for that.
Shouldn't be an issue.
Bring you back information. I think I'm hearing that you want. Plus I'll try to go ahead and help put together a bonding package of, you know, what Chris was thinking about. And put some numbers as far as the cost on that, that would go onto the tax roll.
Mayor, to that point, I, I think, take 1%, 2%, those totals. I, I would be interested in seeing if we, if we bonded for those, if we borrowed for that exact amount, 170 or 240. What the interest charge would be on that money and what the re, what the repayment timeframe would be. So we could see, you know, if, I, and I agree, Chris, it is cheap to borrow money right now, but seeing that number certainly could persuade me one way or the other.
It's a great point. Brent?
It's on next meeting's agenda. Okay. Old business. New business. Brent?
Mayor, just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Pentecost. I put him on pothole patrol this week. I sent him a picture of a, a rather large pothole and within two days it was handled. So thanks to Mike and his team for taking care of that. It was, it was a big one in some school traffic. So thank you, Mr. Pentecost. We appreciate it.
Oh, yes, it's becoming pothole season's now officially open. Anything else, folks? If not, thank you for your time.